There you go.
We're good.
So, welcome to the Planning Board meeting, January 18th, 2022. There are six of us here tonight. I think Amanda, who is, sits here, may be coming in. Our next item of business is to elect a chair and a vice chair. So, as I said earlier, we have two people interested in serving this chair, Bill and Jason. So, I'll open it to the rest of the board to decide where to go.
I'd like to nominate Jason Record for chair.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? So, before we switch Jason, we need a vice chair.
I will nominate Bill Kenny for vice chair.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Why not?
Thank you, unanimous. So, let's, you'll have to.
Grab your little name tags. Hey, Paul. Grab your name.
Well, I'll get back.
Want to switch?
It doesn't matter where the vice chair is.
It doesn't matter where the vice chair is.
Would you switch that, Jason?
Don't drink his water, okay? Drink his water.
Yeah, maybe I want this. It's better than what I had.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the December 21, 21 meeting. Is there a?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion, and I have one point before going around. Christina, on the first page, item F1, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, fifth paragraph down, Mr. Record stated that there are no changes in the day-to-day operations. Regardless of how it came out of my mouth, I meant it to have a question mark on the end. So, if you could say asked or whatever. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? No other comments? Okay. All in favor? All opposed and abstained?
Abstaining.
Very good. Okay.
Were you in favor?
Yep, I'm in favor. Sorry. I'll catch up. All right. Staff site plan reviews, or staff site plan approvals and minor change approvals. We had none. Carla, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, moving on to G, hearings and presentations. The next item is a public hearing for a major subdivision, sketch plan review for a 10-unit condominium, Evergreens Estates, on a 2.83-acre parcel located at 246 Gray Road, Tax Assessor Mathieu, 21 Lot 5A, in the Village Medium Density Residential Zone. Owner applicant is SVR LLC, represented here today by Craig Burgess from Sebago Technics. So, major, so sketch plan review being the first step in a major subdivision process. And then Carla, I know you had sent out an email to us with lots of information that I much appreciate. If you want to take us through that.
Sure. What I did is I wrote a brief email to the board just explaining that our ordinance requires that a major subdivision in a zoning district other than rural residential 1 or 2 can be proposed to be either traditional or cluster design. And that the purpose of the sketch plan review is for the board to learn about the particulars of the proposed site, the project, and then, at the end of all of that, make a decision about whether the cluster design or the traditional design is preferred. And in this case, the applicant is only proposing a cluster design. As you can see up on the screen, it's 10 condominiums, two within each of the five buildings proposed. So, the purpose tonight, as I said in the memo, is certainly to hear about the project and what's proposed. But also, I know a couple of folks have asked me about the intersection with Old Gray Road and Gray Road. And so, we're going to talk about that a little bit tonight as well.
Okay, very good. So, Craig Burgess, take it away.
Do you have a mask off?
Can we have a mask off? Yep.
My name is Matt Orr. I'm actually a civil engineer with Sebago Technics. I'm here in place of Craig this evening, as he couldn't make it. So, the project in front of you guys tonight is, as Carla mentioned, a five duplex for a total of 10 condominium unit cluster subdivision off of Old Gray Road. And as you can see, this design was kept closer to Old Gray Road and so that total impervious area could be kept to a minimum. And with that, the bottom left here of the screen shows the residential density calculations. So, by keeping that impervious area down, we were able to maximize those 10 clustered units. And in doing so as well, the total development will be less than one acre of impervious area, therefore not requiring a main DEP stormwater law or site law permit for this project. As you can see, there are some wetlands to the south of the site, which these were delineated in 2021. Also, in the spring of 2021, a vernal pool survey was conducted, and no vernal pools were found on the property. And existing conditions was also completed last year, which included the boundary survey for the lot split, as you can see here, to develop this parcel. And with that, as I mentioned, there won't be any stormwater law permit, but there could possibly be permits as far as like a permit by rule through main DEP in the event that there's any sort of impacts to those wetlands. We've also made, met the two and a half parking spaces per unit, as there will be one available for one car per driveway, as well as one in each garage for the unit. And then in addition, there are five parking spaces that are being placed in the, in the north side of the site, as you can see, to bring that total to 25, or two and a half per unit. The site is, as it stands today, is being proposed to have two subsurface septic systems for sewage flows. So, those will be towards the western end of the site. And along with that, we are looking into having two private wells on the site to provide domestic as well as other water services towards this development. The reasoning for having two is that, so there will not be a, the well won't be large enough to be a public water supply well. And then there are additional setbacks that come with having a public water supply. So, with that, we will also be conducting a hydrogeologic report, which is a requirement as far as when there are going to be wells to service the development on-site. The project will look to request a waiver of the high-intensity soil survey, just as we are trying to not impact as much of this area as we can. And we will use the available NRCS web soil surveys in order to develop any sort of soils on this property. And as far as that ties in with stormwater, once again, as this project is below the one acre of impervious development, we will be looking to maintain peak rates on the site. And at this time, it's not fully developed as what those will be for, as far as any sort of BMPs, but primarily looking to just maintain the flows on the site so that the peak rates are obviously not increasing from pre to post. And I believe that's about it. As power, cable, and telephone will be extended from underground facilities that are already existing off of Old Gray Road. And then, as Carla had mentioned, there's been some discussions for where the connection for this development will ultimately lead to whether, as it exists today, at the Old Gray Road and Gray Road intersection, or a new intersection to be created off of Gray Road, which I'll let her or staff speak to that more. And then I can answer any questions to the best of my knowledge.
Do you, does the board have questions now? Or do you want to hear from Bill, maybe first?
I have one I'd like to ask before we.
Go ahead.
How far, this map or this diagram looks to me like the entrance into the site from the Old Gray Road is a little bit of a distance to the intersection. One of the other maps that we had looked like it was a lot closer. How far roughly is that road to the intersection? Your entrance?
I don't have a definite answer on that. I believe it was roughly 300 feet. I do know that there were a couple different options that were looked into. And due to site distance, because of the grade change here in Old Gray Road, as that entrance shifted north, anybody coming in or out of that driveway would not necessarily be able to have a great site distance down the hill. And then the same thing, if the driveway were south of where it's shown now, they wouldn't be able to see up the hill. So, if, if there's any changes that may have happened in the sketch, that would be why the, it's located where it is now.
Thank you. I know it's going to, it'll be discussed more in a while. Thank you.
Any other questions? Bill, do we want to go over that now, the rest of it, talking about the entrance and that stuff before we have more questions?
Always glad when we see you main engineers here. Thanks for being here. So, Carla and I have had a lot of discussions with the developer, and there's a lot of pieces in motion here. We've also talked with the town attorney. So, when you see this plan come before you in preliminary fashion, the next step, I guess, hopefully we'll be looking at some different options. We still have more information to gather. They understand that if they use the current intersection that's there, which is tough intersection, everybody that knows it knows it's almost a V, not even a Y, it's almost a V. And it'd be tough to get in and out of, and that road would have to be rebuilt from the intersection. It's about somewhere a little bit north of 400 feet to the entrance of this new subdivision. So, there are some other things that we're looking at, you know, potential other options for road entrances, waterline extensions, those type of things. This, in fairness to the development team, Carla and I didn't meet with them till last week. So, they really haven't had a lot of time to kind of put this pen to paper to see if it actually will work. And so, I think some of those things are still in progress. So, I think this part of the development is pretty solid. It's what happens from Old Gray Road to Gray Road and everything in between that we're exploring right now. So, I'm hopeful that we'll have some, some, a better concept for you for the, what we'll call off-site improvements. And that, I think, will be beneficial to the neighborhood as well as hopefully to the development as well. So, everybody has been very positive in looking and exploring those options. So, when we come back to you with the, the rest of the plan, I think that's when more details are, will, can be laid out. Because if you know that intersection, it's, it's a tough area to get out and, and a tough area to get into if you're coming, especially from the south, heading north.
And Bill, where is, where on Old Gray Road are the drainage issues? And we just got a new easement to try to help that, right?
Exactly. It's a little bit further down Old Gray Road. You can't really see it on the map, but maybe, I'm trying to see, because right next to this, this, this is still the Banfield property. This would be the Emerald Commons, next lot down. The next lot is where we've got the drainage easement, and all this flows downhill. So, our drainage easement is across what used to be the lumberyard, the board barn. So, so that's all going to help.
Paul? Yeah, Bill, I'm curious, it's not a state road. So, who has authority on, I mean, the comment was made, the main can't do anything because it's not a state road. Who does have authority?
The town.
The town.
This is a town-owned road. Old Gray Road is a town-owned.
So, the site distances and everything can be determined?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And the state, Carla's had a pretty good, I'll let her speak. I mean, she had some really good conversations with the state, and I think they were pretty direct in what we can and can't do.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board at this time? I think that other entrance would be a major upgrade if it could happen. I do have concerns of the, the way that that enters onto the road. I, I sort of, I fear that that's a safety issue waiting to happen with more traffic. So, the original parcel being 8.51 acres, the division that happened recently to shave off this 5.69 acres, that was just a division by right, just to create that of the lot?
As far as I'm aware, yeah, it was purchased and sold to divide.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. Public comment?
We'd need a public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, after, yeah.
All right, no? All right, so at this time, I will open the public hearing for comments. Seeing none. I will bring it back to the board. And so, the only thing we're looking for tonight is a decision on to approve it being a clustered division, right? Or clustered subdivision versus traditional.
That's correct.
And Craig, sorry, did you guys entertain a traditional subdivision? It kind of looks like it's not really, wouldn't work great. But did you go through that process at all?
Having not been directly involved with this, right, so I'm here in place of Craig, but having not been directly involved with this, I'm not entirely sure to that answer. But I do believe their intent was to just go with a clustered subdivision. I believe due to density and the way the wetlands are associated, lot sizing wouldn't work out to have, basically make a maximum use of this land.
Okay. And Carla, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have the option for conservation subdivision in this zoning. But the same logic sort of still applies when we do a clustered subdivision, that that open space remains open space forever, sort of, right?
Right.
Because it's part of the calculation?
Yep.
Okay.
I will make a motion that the board's preference is for a clustered, or the board's preference is that a cluster design is preferable for a 10-unit condominium project located at 246 Gray Road, Tax Assessor Mathieu, 21 Lot 5A.
You second it?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? And opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, G2, public hearing. Recommendation, recommendation to the town council to amend the official overlay zoning map for Cumberland, Maine to eliminate the medical caregiver overlay zone from the Village Center Commercial Zoning District. So, this is in just the one area in West Cumberland, it looks like. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, before you, just as you laid out, the town council on Monday night will hopefully be preparing to adopt the new standards for marijuana licensing, medical caregiver marijuana licensing for the entire town. Part of that review looked at the number of medical marijuana caregivers we have presently. And if you recall, several years ago, I think it was 2018, we basically divided the town into three different zones. There was one on Route 100, one on Route 9 in the HC zone, and then in the OC South, which is the southern end of Route 1 toward Falmouth. Those three were going to be identified as medical caregiver areas. As soon as that was established, very quickly thereafter, we ended up with three, and ironically, right next to each other on Route 100. At this point, the council feels that this area of town, which we are looking to do some serious economic development to in the next few years, probably has enough of these type of uses and has recommended that we eliminate the medical caregiver overlay district for Route 100 and just leave them for the HC and the OC South. So, that is the, that is the request tonight to basically ask you to make a recommendation to the council for their Monday evening meeting. And depending on which way that goes, we'll see how Monday night goes. So, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Bill, do you have numbers on the other areas? And how many medical caregivers are in those?
There are none.
None?
There are 38, we estimate, because we don't have an, an exact number, and that's the best guess, that there are 38 medical caregivers in the town of Cumberland presently. If, Monday night, if the licensing ordinance goes through, they will all be required to be licensed within the next 90 days.
But they would have to be in these overlay zones?
No, they would not. That's the, that's the piece that came afterwards. The, the current 38, they, if they predated our licensing ordinances, would be grandfathered in place. But they still would have to meet the licensing requirements for hours of operation. And a lot of the requirements are very identical to what they have to do now under their current licenses with the state.
Okay. And briefly, could you talk about the difference between a caregiver and a retail, we're going to, you know, setup that could be used for recreational stuff, I guess?
Those are prohibited in the town of Cumberland. Medical, medical marijuana caregivers are allowed to have a space available so that they can meet with their patients to basically display product and review, review their preferences and those type of things. But they aren't allowed to have, for instance, they can't have a sign that says, "Open, come on in, we're for business." You have to have a actual medical marijuana card to actually go to this facility and basically procure medical marijuana from these folks. So, it's very, very different. These are not really what you and I would think of as a retail store. You can't go into it. Typically, there are hours and there are appointments that are set to meet with their patients. It's, it's a pretty intense group of people. The three people that are getting licensed now on Route 100 have worked very closely with us on the development of the licensing ordinances. And they've been great to work with. And they've given us a lot of very positive feedback that was kind of evolved the way the whole licensing ordinance came about. So, we feel pretty comfortable with what we have. Anyone that comes forward now with a new medical marijuana caregiver operation has to locate, and hopefully, one of the two districts in the future. They, they can't locate anywhere else in town. You can't have these uses in residential neighborhoods like the other 35 are presently. They're kind of spread out throughout town, and that's all the information the state will give us. And we won't know much more until after the licensing piece ends. That's the difficult piece, because there, it seems like a commercial operation when there's, you know, sales back and forth. And it's, and it doesn't even require what a home occupation does to, you know, get permitted. So, that's why we enacted the licensing ordinance.
And these caregivers, a few years ago, I learned about this. Is this still where these folks are growing plants for the people that need the product?
Correct. Yeah, there's a specific amount of plants they are allowed to grow, specific number of seedlings, and all, all of the above. There's different categories for each one of those. Those are addressed in the licensing ordinance as well.
Okay. That's all I had. Other questions from the board for Bill? Bill?
Mr. Manager, the three businesses that are operating out there now are grandfathered.
They are correct.
What happens if they sell their businesses to the people?
It's not transferable.
Okay, thank you.
And would that be the case also for the other 35 that were grandfathered? They're also not transferable.
That's correct.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Do we do a public, I guess we do a public comment? So, I'll open up to the public for comment. And seeing none. Bring it back to the board for a potential motion.
I will make a motion that we make a recommendation to the town council to amend the official overlay zoning map for Cumberland, Maine to eliminate the medical caregiver overlay zone from the Village Center Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
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 Thank you. All right, further discussion from the board before we vote? I did have one other clarifying question. So, we're eliminating it from the Village Center Commercial Zoning District. And does that only exist, that, Village Center Commercial, does that only exist in West Cumberland?
That's correct. That's the only VCC.
Okay, all right, very good. Oh, and.
Actually, I, I have a question. So, that will leave us with two overlays. Are there concerns in those areas that as new folks apply for licenses and provide the services in those overlays that will be visiting this topic again and, and looking to remove overlays as people become uncomfortable with this in their neighborhood? I, I don't know the right way to say that, because I think the reason we got here is because there initially was a neighbor complaining about some of the, the smells or whatnot. And then, over the last year, there were some additional complaints. And I'm assuming they were all in this area, because that's where the facilities are located. And are we just pushing the problem somewhere else?
No, I, I think, I think it'll be an interesting couple of years, because I think there'll be changes at the state level as well. So, right now, you have the, you know, medical caregiver group, and you have the recreational marijuana group. And there are forces that are trying to push the 201, 1 tent. And I don't think that's going to work too well. So, we'll have to watch how that happens. And we could even have more changes this legislative session. So, we don't know. I think what'll happen, though, is that if you want to be a medical marijuana caregiver, you will have to be in the, in the future. You'll have to be on Route 9 in the HC, or you'll have to be in the Village, the VOC, wait a minute, the Office Commercial South on Route 1. The 18 district sometimes get me confused. So, so you're, you're very well, you pose a very interesting question, because if those lots all fill up, we're not allowed to restrict the number of licenses we have in the town. We're not allowed to restrict those, that type of occupation. So, that could get challenged, and we may be forced to visit another section of the commercial districts for that type of use. What the council believed is that when you're, you know, selling something at your home, and when you're basically dealing with products, it's no different than a home occupation. And there's absolutely no regulation in, in this area. So, that's why we went with the licensing ordinance to try to kind of line ourselves up a little bit more closely with, I think, what people would be used to. And people have to get the license annually. So, it'll hopefully, hopefully help with any issues of folks that are kind of not really following the rules. And there is no, no longer, if you're in the medical caregiver category, there is no more outdoor growing allowed as part of this license. more outdoor growing allowed as part of this license. So everything will have to be indoor grow.
So is there licensing that occurs at the state level, and now as a town, our ordinance would impose a local licensing to be able to be within Cumberland? Is that...
That is correct.
Okay.
That's exactly, great way to describe it.
And then question, the, the meeting that's going to happen in February with the town council to look at this area for redevelopment, has that been set?
Yes, February 28th. It'll be in the Recreation Hall, in the West Cumberland Recreation Hall. We want to do it in West Cumberland. It won't be televised. The content of the meeting will be broadcast in the March meeting of the town council. So we'll get it on tape, but the February 28th meeting is intended to be more of a neighborhood meeting to encourage the West Cumberland folks to come out, take a look at it. If, you probably don't recall this, but pre-COVID, the DOT came out to meet with the council and said that they propose at the intersection of Blanchard, of Skellon, Blackstrap, and Route 100, a four-way stop sign. So those of you who drive through there often enough would say, wow, that doesn't seem safe. It seems like it may be a worse accident ready to happen. And we've been working very hard with the DOT and with others to look at that intersection, and potentially, what we're hoping for, if we're successful, is some type of roundabout, similar to what you see in Falmouth, similar to what you see at USM. And I think that will be a much better solution than a four-way stop sign. So, and I think it'll start signifying, you know, an entrance to West Cumberland that really feels like a pass-through almost, instead of like an arrival point, and that's kind of what we're going to strive for. So if you're around and you have nothing to do on a Monday evening, February 28th, I will definitely extend an invitation to you. It'll be a workshop meeting with the town council, and hopefully, some of you will be able to attend.
Thank you. And I had one, one last thing. The January 10th town council meeting, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to watch the video, and I haven't seen the minutes. Was the moratorium extended to allow for more time for the ordinance?
Thank you. That's a great, that's a great follow-up question, yes. And it was only extended because the, the moratorium expired two days before the council meeting, and we were afraid if there was a snowstorm or weather and it canceled the February 24th council meeting, you know, it would be kind of a free-for-all, and we'd have more potentially businesses that were, you know, wouldn't be grand, that would be grandfathered as well, and we were trying to avoid that. So that's the only reason. On the 24th, weather permitting, if everything goes well, which it looks like it will, the moratorium will be rescinded that evening as well.
And that's because the, we're looking to pass the ordinance?
Yep, it'll be, and as soon as it's voted upon, it'll be in effect that evening.
Thank you.
Great questions.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we still need a vote, is that right? All right, so all in favor?
No motion yet. Is that recommended?
We had a, we had a motion from, okay. And opposed? All right, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so next item is administrative matters, and I do have one that I just happened to notice today. On the website, Lorraine is listed in two places, is that...
Yeah, I think I have two jobs.
Is that correct? She's listed under staff contacts, as well as as board members. So, I think that's an error. It's just on the website. I just noticed it. That's all I have for that. Anything else in administrative matters? Okay, then, item I. Anyone?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, and all in favor? Opposed?
I see one.
Unanimous? Very good. Thank you.
Good job.